And I'll start real call with the Mr. Weimer. Weimer.
Paul Weimer, City Council member.
Jenny's taking me five years, right?
Mike Warrington, City Council member.
Jody O'Katy, City Council member.
Ronnie Price, Mayor.
Homer, City Council President.
Phil Hamilton, City Council member.
Tim Berry, City Council member.
Ben Graver, Captain, Police Department.
Chad Russell, Fire Chief.
Matt Kane, Finance Director.
Dana Ingsstrom, City Clerk.
J T Klaus, City Attorney.
Les Mangus, Director of Community Development.
Jolene Graham, Assistant City Administrator.
Jennifer McCoslin, City Administrator.
All right, this time Rick Newbauer, Lead Police and Fire Chaplain is going to lead us in prayer.
Yeah, if you would join me in prayer, thank you. Heavenly Father, we come to you today in praise and thanksgiving. We thank you for the rain that you have blessed us with. We pray for those who experienced the severe end of the weather. We ask that you would be with them. We're privileged to be here today after celebrating Memorial Day and thinking of those who have given their lives that we might have the freedom to be here tonight, to interact with our elected leaders, to strive together for the betterment of our city, to make Andover a better place to live. And we thank you for that privilege. We pray that you would watch over our conversations tonight, guard our hearts against personal agendas, that we would be united and moving forward with the things that make this a great community to live in. And we ask all these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. All right, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this time I'm open to open up for a public forum. If you have something you'd like to say, state your name, address, and keep it short. No one here wants to talk tonight. Public forums closed. Acceptance of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Presentation Municipal Golf Course Four Q Report 2024. Dick Stuntz is going to talk to us about this. How you doing, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, and Mr. Mayor did speak correctly. This is a report for the fourth quarter of 24, as well as the entire year of 24. You should have both reports to consolidate there. So we're a little late on getting around to you and we'll try and do a bit a little more prompt as we go forward. If you just browse the reports, a year over year, 2024 versus 2023, rounds were down slightly. That's the first time in the five years, I guess I've been managing your golf course, that we have not had an increase, but we started five years ago at 9,000 rounds and we hit 14,000 rounds a year ago and and in 24, about 13,000 rounds. Revenues were about flat. We've had small little increases typically. In recent couple of years, we've raised our prices about a dollar per nine holes, whether it's a greens fee or whether it is a cart fee. And that's kind of kept us, as you can tell, revenue wise, we're just kind of breaking even with a small loss in the rounds. The other thing I'd like to mention and to credit to staff and to everybody sitting up front here is the major improvement in our irrigation system mainline. What an important aspect, an important improvement to help us keep our turf healthy because until those improvements were put in, are what I would call irrigation reliance or irrigation safety was very poor. And if we had any kind of problems with the old system, we simply were down and I know bringing out the water trucks was the only way that we saved our greens, but then did suffer some damage. So that's a major, major step in having, in improving our security and access to water so that we can continue with our turf programs and get better and better. The other thing is, as we discussed it, this is jumping the gun a little bit into, I guess, first quarter in 25 is the irrigation, or excuse me, the equipment, golf course maintenance equipment that we shifted gears and went from buying a piece a year to doing it into a lease purchase type arrangement. And we are just in the process. We don't quite have everything in yet, but once again, another major step forward for us operating that golf course to keep it in good shape and to be efficient with our operations. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I've noticed that the annual passes have dropped to zero. Is there, it shows 24 zero and 23 is five.
What?
Is that correct?
No, it's not correct.
That is the fourth quarter 24 summary, but then on it says total at the very bottom right hand corner. It says 2024, zero, 23, five.
Okay, those would be sales made in that quarter, in that quarter only. So you must be looking at the fourth quarter report?
I must be.
Yeah. So those are just sales made or annual passes made during that timeframe?
Okay.
The total number of annual passes is around forty?
Sixty-one.
Thank you.
For the year. And that was just seven behind 2023, so.
Okay, what page is that on?
I included that in the memo. So that was not in the report. I don't think we had, I don't think we had memberships on any of the paperwork, but I did include that in the memo.
Jennifer always asks me for them. I just give her a copy and you have a copy. Do they have the copy of all the people that are, that have annual passes?
I don't put the names in the packet, so I just do that analysis in your memo every time.
Thank you. I did get a text last Thursday that you had 87 people play golf that day.
Yeah.
That's a lot of folks.
We really, after a very poor winter, we're really slow this winter weather wise. We have really had some nice big days and we've had more play. I'm going to just say in the last month or so than we've ever had. And so we're very encouraged about going forward, very encouraged. We get a lot of, we get a lot of great reports about conditions on the golf course and I'm proud of the progress, but I look forward to even taking it to the next, to the next level as far as conditioning is concerned.
I even got a comment from one person that you could, it was noticeable difference from the highway on the number nine green, I believe it was.
Probably one fairway.
I can't remember.
Could be number one fairway. We put a little rye grass on that. Glad to see they saw it from the road because that was the purpose for that.
All right, anyone else? All right, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you all. Thanks. Thanks so much to the City of Andover. I say it before, I'll say it again. This is my fourth government, whether it's a lease or a manage or whatever. It's the best one I've ever had as far as cooperation from the city, from the staff and from the folks sitting up front. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve consent agenda items eight point one through eight point five as presented.
Second.
Take a second.
Jody.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was yawning. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Nine one, Andover Business Improvement Grants. And Les is going to talk to us about this.
Mr. Mayor and Council, tonight for your consideration are four projects that the Grant Committee has recommended for the Andover Business Improvement Grant Program. We had eight applications. Only four of those were complete enough that we felt comfortable in in selecting them for awards. The other four have been notified that we need more information to consider them. The the awards for the first four projects don't consume all of the $40,000 budget. They leave a little over $15,000 for consideration of the other four projects once they submit the complete applications with estimates of the actual work to be done.
Thank you very much. Anyone got any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Les, what was done before the grant awards? Was there anything in place as far as the city went? As far as like beautifying Andover, the city helping businesses with that? Was there anything before this project?
I don't recall anything. Remember this was called the Andover Road Business Improvement Grant for many years. And then when I took over, I thought we really ought to, we ought to expand it to any business in the city rather than concentrating strictly on Andover Road. The original focus was was to address some concerns that were expressed during a comprehensive plan, public engagement. So now we've just taken it one step further to encompass any business in the city.
I'd be interested in maybe making it available to businesses all year, not just you know, for a period of time. I'm reading a book that Thirteen Ways to Kill a Community. And one of the chapters is talking about being a good partner with existing businesses and helping them beautify the side of it. Now, I don't know what that cost share looks like or what that budget would look like, but maybe we start with the 40,000 and open it up for, you know, all year. I don't know. Just an idea, maybe something to think about.
In reviewing these applications over the years, we've always had, generally, we've had more asked than we had funds available. So we've had to kind of winnow out those that we felt were the best use of the money.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to accept the Andover Business Improvement Grant Committee recommendations for awarding grant funds to four selected projects in the following amounts. $4,494.63 to Andover Chamber of Commerce. $2,279.59 to Family Physicians of Kansas. $15,000 to Watercrest LLC. And $3,016.73 to Andover Family Counseling LLC.
Second.
Get just to your point. And I know it's a hard pull, Homer, but if someone starts a business in March, it's kind of hard for them to wait till January to do the signings, but but I understand there's only so much you can do. And there for a while, when I first become mayor, it seemed like a lot of people didn't even take advantage of it. And I think this governing body, last two governing bodies have taken the initiative to, hey, man, there's things out there that even so. And we've also had folks, just for the folks listening out there, we've also had people that put in for it and then didn't use it, right? So it's a fickle, it's a fickle audience. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. All right, ten one, mayoral appointment. Site Plan Review Committee and Dana is going to talk to us about this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Site Plan Review Committee is comprised of six members who are nominated by the mayor and subject to the approval of the governing body. These dedicated individuals serve staggered three-year terms. Due to a recent resignation, a vacancy currently exists on the committee for a term set to expire January of 2028. To ensure the committee can continue its important work, the mayor is recommending the appointment of Mr. Andrew Jarvis to fill this expired, unexpired term. That concludes my presentation. And if you have any questions, Mayor Price is available.
I do have one question, Mr. Mayor. How many people applied for this role? Do we know?
Two.
Two, okay. I'm just, people volunteering and doing things for their community has become very, very challenging lately. So I'm just trying to think, I mean, we have two people. That's great. I was expecting just this one, to be quite honest with you. So maybe moving, I don't know what we can do different or what we can do, you know, but maybe we need to start thinking about not having so many different committees or so many different site plan, you know, all these different items that we have and maybe, you know, kind of streamline it down to something a little easier where we don't have to get people to volunteer and do that. I don't know what we can do. I just know that, you know, time is very precious and people are not volunteering for non-paying roles as much as they used to back, you know, back in the day. So I just kind of wanted to kind of, you know, throw my thought out there anyway.
You're right, Tim, but at other times we'll get five or six, you know, so it's just, again, it's a very fickle audience. My gentleman's name is stepping down, how long he served.
Doug Allison has been on the committee and has been the chairperson since just after Site Plan Review was adopted in the late 1990s. So he's 25 years plus. We were actually going back through minutes trying to figure out exactly when he was appointed and we haven't found that in the minutes yet. It's 25 plus years old.
Man, that's a, that's a, that's a public servant right there, right?
Yes.
So thank you, Doug Allison, for all the years you've served and without pay, just out of the goodness of your heart. And he's taken time off to spend time with his, more time with his grandchildren. So hats off to him.
Every month for 25, I mean, that's that's crazy.
Pretty good. Yeah, it is. All right. Any further questions or discussion? Oh, can I get a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the mayor's nomination of Andrew Jarvis to the Site Plan Review Committee to fill the vacant, unexpired term to expire in January of 2028.
Second.
And Mr. Jarvis is well-rounded in a lot of things, so I think he'll be a good addition to the Site Plan Committee. Sometimes if I don't know, I introduce him to Les and we go at it that way, but I met with Mr. Jarvis and he's very well-rounded in a lot of things. So I think he'll be a good addition. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Eleven, eleven one, Vista Ridge Second Edition First Phase Final PUD. And Les is going to speak to us on this.
Mr. Mayor and Council, for your consideration tonight is the Final Plan Unit Development Plan, the plat of the Vista Ridge Second Edition. You may recall that this is the eastern two thirds or so of the Pratt property across Central Avenue here from City Hall. Ritchie Development is the developer of the property and they have filed this final plat that is maybe a little less than a third of the lots in the subdivision. They're phasing it as seems to be typical these days that they bring on 30 to 50 lots instead of an entire subdivision in one plat. Following, Jolene will talk to you about the public improvements and the guarantees and so forth, but the first action is to accept the dedications on the face of the plat.
Mr. Mayor, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Les, do you know what they're planning on doing with the Reserve B property? Or area?
Reserve B is for drainage.
Is that drainage? Okay.
Both Reserve A and B are for drainage and landscaping.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to accept the dedications of land on the Vista Ridge Second Edition First Phase Final PUD is approved by the Planning Commission.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Eleven two, Vista Ridge Second Edition First Phase Petition Resolution of Visability and Developers Agreement. And Jolene will speak to us on this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. And tonight before you are the petitions for Vista Ridge Second Edition First Phase that Les just walked you through for stormwater drain, stormwater sewer, paving, water and sanitary sewer improvements. It also includes the developers agreement spelling out the financial guarantees which we have collected and the resolution of visibility prepared by your city attorney. And all these improvements will be paid by the benefiting properties. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Anyone?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to accept the petitions for stormwater drain, stormwater sewer, paving, water and sanitary sewer improvements. Approve the Developers Agreement and adopt a resolution of advisability related to the Vista Ridge Second Edition First Phase.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Eleven three, Vista Ridge Second Edition Phase One Work Ordinance. And Jolene again, speak to us about this.
This is relation also to Vista Ridge Second Edition First Phase, and this is to adopt an ordinance authorizing the construction of the internal improvements covered by the petitions.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt an ordinance authorizing the construction of certain internal improvements related to Vista Ridge Second Edition First Phase.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Twelve one, Resolution Establishing Repetition Fees. Did I say that right?
Yes.
Jolene is going to talk to us about that.
Repetition, yes.
Repetition.
Mayor and Council, this is, resolution is a result of a conversation that we had in our April workshop. And we discussed about how there is a significant increase that you are seeing of projects that are being repetitioned. And we talked about the costs that are involved from both a staff time perspective and the time that our legal team spends on unraveling those petitions to be able to restate them and amend them. This resolution establishes a repetition fee in the amount of $3,000 per revised petition. And it will defray the additional costs so that it is not borne by the taxpayers for the work done for amending petitions. This fee will be payable by the developer at the time that they are submitting the repetitions and they will not be allowed to be assessed to the properties. I did want to point out that there are a couple of services that we as staff try to provide to prevent the need for repetitions. As engineers estimates come in, like for example with your previous item on Vista Ridge, we review all engineers estimates and provide feedback. Ultimately, it is engineers call as to what those estimates will be. We also do not bond to the petition amount, but to actual costs. So that is not a disincentive to the developer to estimate a little higher. And we also allow the financial guarantees to be revised down once the bids have come in. So again, those are services that we have as a city provide to be amenable to developers in this instance.
So refresh my memory, this is so that we don't have to waste city staff's time and treasure doing the same nonsense because of the bids are coming in too low.
Too high, yeah.
Nonsense, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, the bids are coming in higher than the engineers estimates and we're seeing that consistently over this past year, actually. And so this will ideally streamline it so that we only do this process once.
Jolene, and then just a point of clarification. So in the event there is any amended petition that has to come forward, it has to come in front of us to decide if we want to pass on waiving it for an exception. Does it provide staff any discretion in making that call?
No, staff does not have the discretion to make that call. Only council can deviate from policy.
Good question. Anyone else?
Jolene, have you had anybody scoff at this? I mean, I'm sure, I mean, it's gotten out, we want to do this. Have you had anybody say anything or less? Has anybody said anything?
No, when I, on the previous action item that you took on Vista Ridge Second, I did make them aware that I foresaw this resolution coming to you and that I anticipated that you would approve it. And so they did, based on that information, they did rework some of their numbers after we had provided some feedback. And, you know, for any petition that comes forth, this is something that I will for sure provide as well as all that we can do to be a good partner with them to help this petition process be a one and done kind of a deal.
So it sounds like it worked. It's working.
For the intended purpose.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So going forward, we're going to let them know upfront, hey, these coming low.
Absolutely, we will.
Okay. Anyone else? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the Resolution Amending Resolution Number 41-31, Restating the Policy for the Financing of Public Improvements and the Leaving of Special Assessments Within the City of Andover, Kansas by Amending Section Three Relating to Revised Petition Fees.
Second, Barry.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. My favorite subject. 159th Street Project Landscaping. And Les is going to talk to us about this.
Mr. Mayor and Council, following our typical arterial street improvement projects, we put together a landscaping plan and do a modest addition of trees along the roadside just for aesthetics. This particular project has drug on a little bit longer than we typically do because we've spent a lot of time settling up with the homeowners associations on the seeding, sodding, irrigation repairs, electrical conduit repairs to their private lighting that crossed the right of way and so forth. But we're at a point now where we're comfortable enough that we, we know what we've got left in our budget. We know that the repairs have been made to the irrigation that we damaged with the project and we're ready to install that landscape project. The project was bid by two contractors we've done business with many times. Premier Landscape and Cedars Inc. In this case, Premier Landscaping was the low bidder at 31,410 and we would recommend them highly. We've had great experience with them over the years.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Will this mark us done then for Kellogg essentially all the way up to 13th at least?
This marks us done from just north of Kellogg to just north of 21st Street.
Nice.
But so to Homer's point, my question is, this is it. I'm done. Right?
I was, I emailed this afternoon. We actually, over the holiday weekend, continued to receive some emails this weekend. I have asked Les to get me, just like with the trees, a per square footage cost per tree, which is the amount that we wrote to the outstanding HOA. And they understood that rationale and seemed to accept where that came from. I've asked Les, like at a very late hour, like within the hour, to do a similar calculation for ground cover, what we've done for the other HOAs. We are working with the project engineer on a drainage piece that's outstanding. And we're working with Evergy on trying to get some kind of dimming solution. Evergy poles, I do not know what we'll be able to do there, but we are still working on that. Those are, to my understanding of the situation, the only outstanding pieces.
So in regards to their burn, we don't have to put any more money into that? Are we just reimbursing them for the junk they did?
So what I'm proposing is that we would look at what we would have paid to seed or sod, whatever we've done for everyone else if they hadn't gone and done kind of their own thing, much like the trees. And that would be the amount that we would still reimburse them and then that would be it.
That seems fair.
In my humble opinion, they've screwed up the aesthetics of that whole block. It looks ridiculous, in my opinion. And that's not on us, that's on them, right? So I don't want to keep feeding this horse. I don't want to do this. I'll just be clear, I don't want to do this. If y'all remember, I sent you an email telling them no. I don't want to. We've done so much stuff above and beyond and all the complaints are coming from Cedric County side of the street. You know what I mean? And we did, we did this in good, you know, improved the value of their property. You know, everything we did. And then they, then they come in through and ugly it up. And they're mad at us because it's ugly. And they want to talk about the poles on the other side of the street, which is none of their business. They live in Cedric County. I understand the lights, that's one thing. But the poles on this side of the street is none of their business, you know what I mean? So I've had enough of it. And I'm going to start pushing back. I don't care who lives over there, who they think they are. They live in Cedric County. They can call their, they can call, they can call their commissioner, their council person for that area. I give them the numbers. So, we're done, we're done throwing Andover citizen money at Cedric County side of the street. That's just the way I feel about it. So, and I made it very clear to one of the folks that live there, I'm done. You made it all look like trash. And it's got grass on it, and I don't know what kind of grass it is, but they can't mow, you know what I mean? So they've taken a project that we spent a lot of money on and tore it up. So, that's just the way I feel about it. I'm here to take care of sixteen thousand people living in Andover, and I don't care about five that live over in Cedric County. It's not my job. So I will stop.
And kind of to the mayor's point, I want to thank staff for all the time and efforts they've been expending on this over the last several months. Kind of like what the mayor alluded to. I think the city has been more than generous in this situation. I've lived here long enough to remember that the tree line that was there was just an old hedgerow. So really, anything that we plan over there is a drastic improvement than what was previously lining that street, and I think staff has been more than cooperative and generous in dealing with this entire thing.
I'm not angry at y'all. I appreciate your efforts. I'm tired of them, you know? I mean, I walk into public and I hear about that street and I'm tired of it, you know? We've done more than anybody else would have done. You know, they can't even get their own city to spend money out there. So that's on, that's not our problem. But I, I digress, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just, Phil just brought it up, so I apologize, Jody. Um, but in regards to like hedgerows, right? Why don't we just replant with hedged trees?
They're not really a preferable tree.
I get that.
They, they've got...
But if that's what they wanted...
They've got thorns, drop hedge apples. They're, they're not something we would go back and replant. We might plant something that's a little more desirable tree, something that's a little easier to maintain and a little bit more, uh, amenable to, to pedestrians and bicycles.
Oh, okay. I was just saying, maybe the hedgerow could stay on the Cedric County side. Okay, thank you.
I, I do have a quick question. Les, didn't we pay when we took all these trees out? Didn't we pay these people for trees? Am I thinking of...
Most, most of these trees uh, on the Cedric County side specifically, were in the existing right-of-way.
Okay.
So we didn't have to buy right-of-way from them.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you're talking about the east side.
Yeah. Is this something different? I mean, were we doing anything different that we wouldn't do for any other street? I mean, we plant trees, got a hundred and fifty-ninth and Central.
Right, Central Andover Road.
Yeah, so I mean, this really is...
Thirteenth, Twenty-first, we've...
I mean, I, I'm with the mayor and everybody else. I think we're bending over backwards for, for, for these few people. I, I support this because, I mean, we do it everywhere else. We've widened the road and all that, but I think we've, we're, we're, we I, I think we're at the point now where we, we're good neighbors and it's time to put a fence up, so.
All right, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to accept the lowest qualified bid from Premier Landscaping Incorporated in the amount of thirty-one thousand, four hundred and ten dollars and reject all other bids and authorize the mayor to sign the contract for a hundred and fifty-ninth Street Tree Planning Project.
Second, Barry.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Public hearing on vaca- vacation case, Emprise. Fourteen-one Vacation at Founder Parkway Street Right-of-Way. And Les is going to talk to us about this.
Mr. Mayor and Council, you may remember that, uh, when we went out to the adjacent property owners to acquire right-of-way for the Founder's Parkway project from Andover Road over to Sunflower Lane, the last remaining segment of Founder's Parkway, we encountered what everyone thought was a public street, but I knew it was just a private driveway. And we reached out to those adjacent owners and started negotiations over the acquisition of that right-of-way. Uh, Atwoods Incorporated was gracious and granted to us not only the right-of-way we needed, but a, a remnant of their property that, with the right-of-way, would have been useless to them. And as we further negotiated with the Emprise Bank adjacent, uh, it, it became apparent to us that for Emprise's operation to stay at that location, that remnant of the Atwoods property would be a, a good location for them to relocate their ATM service and their, their, uh, teller window on the backside of the building. So through those negotiations, we, we put together a, a bit of a land swap right-of-way for this remnant of property. The property was dedicated from Atwoods as street right-of-way. The bank's attorneys have asked us to clear that right-of-way cloud from the title of the property that we would deed over to them as a part of that negotiation, and this action tonight would vacate that right-of-way and clear the right-of-way cloud from the title. Planning Commission has, has heard this agenda item also and recommend vacation of the excess right-of-way.
So, uh, this is kind of... So we're the red lines there on Emprise? Uh, man, can we do something above and beyond? I can just see somebody driving in that office. Uh, like there's a, like on Andover, on, on, uh, Douglas, somebody come around that corner and took out the electrical box about quarter block in. I'm afraid that, I'm afraid that somebody will come around that corner and be in the, the office of that lady right there on the, uh, south side. Is there, can we go? Can we make sure that, uh...
I don't guess I'm following.
So on the, on the north side of Emprise?
Yes.
That bank's going to be darn near touching the road, right?
Uh, there's about fifteen feet from the face of the building to the sidewalk, five-foot sidewalk, and about a three-foot landscape strip, so it's over twenty-five feet.
All right.
Which is, which is fairly typical.
I can just, I just keep thinking about that electrical box that somebody flew around that corner, and it was about the same distance. Maybe that's something Site Plan can address to have them do something on their, their end of it to...
It's interesting you mentioned the, the electrical box. The transformers that feed that building are at the northeast corner of the building that are kind of a barrier between the building and the, and the roadway.
Okay. All right. Anyone else want to?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to recommend that the governing body approve the vacation of a portion of the Founder's Parkway Street Right-of-Way.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. And on timeframe on that particular road, we're looking at starting at maybe in this, this time next year?
We'll bid at first quarter of twenty-six.
Yeah. Uh, member items. Let me start with Mr. Barry, if you'd like.
So I do have just, uh, one thing. I want to thank, uh, Mr. Herschel West with West Waste Connections. Um, uh, Megan, Megan, myself, Rick, and Dana did a recycle, uh, plant tour there in South Hutchinson. Um, back on May sixth, I'm a little late saying anything, but, uh, I honestly forgot the last, last council meeting. Um, it, it was actually very interesting, uh, kind of eye-opening. So if you do recycle in the city of Andover and use the Waste Connection tan bin, it actually goes to the Waste Connection Recycle Plant. Um, it's a lot, it's a lot more automated and a lot more fancy, I guess, than what I thought it would be. Um, but it was a very good tour. Uh, they, they do a really good job at separating, you know, processing everything. Um, so no, I want to just reach out to Herschel and make sure you tell him thank you. I think Megan's working on a little video, a little...
Oh, I was going to ask you, taking picture?
Yeah, some social media
Okay.
videos, some TikToks, I hope, on, uh, some of the, uh, uh, plant tour. Um, because it was, it was very interesting, and it was, it was eye-opening and good to see because I was one of the citizens that I swore it, it all went to the trash, you know, to the, to the transfer station, all got shipped out, so, but, um, it didn't, so. And Tyler is the plant manager, if I remember correctly. Tyler was a very good guy, uh, very informative, and, uh, he started out actually as a driver and has worked his way up all the way to plant manager. So it was, it was a really interesting tour. If they do another one, I'd highly recommend you guys go on, so. That's all I have. Oh, and, uh, swim. Uh, Andover High School took, um, swim. I can't remember which swim. Somebody else will, will say it, but I, they took swim, but that's all I got.
Thank you, Tim.
Uh, Heritage Fest, shout out to Megan and Beth. That was a lot of work. It was awesome. I think there was almost nine hundred, a thousand people there, so it turned out really nicely.
Nine hundred thousand people?
Nine hundred thousand.
That was a record!
It was a lot. Nine hundred to a thousand. Uh, and it was, it was awesome, like, all, everything about it was cool. Uh, Andover Citizen Police Academy, applications are open till the middle of next month. Do it. It's awesome. It's, takes a lot of time, but I learned more than I possibly could have imagined about how our police department operates and the high level of standards that they have and discharge in their responsibilities. That's all I got.
I second what Phil said about the police academy. I, I think, kind of going with what Tim said, like, you, you don't think anything happens or, you know, the police in Andover, um, you know, have an easy job kind of thing, but until you take that Citizens Police Academy, and I remember Captain, um, Gray were talking about it before, uh, you, you know, doing the, the FTO stuff and training and just everything that goes into it, very interesting. So if you have any interest or you're one of those keyboard warriors that think, um, you, you know, it's bad, try it out, man. Just, just give it a try. Um, there's a lot of weeks there that you, you come in the evening and, and they make it interesting, they make it fun. Um, it'll be interesting to see how the next academy goes, so appreciate you guys doing that. Thank you.
And they just are eighteen to a hundred and forty that can do it? Did you? Okay.
You're in. You're in.
I have taken it, by the way, and I was, I was shocked.
Before they raised the page?
Yes, yes, thank you.
You got a special waiver.
Cannot finish.
Get a doctor's note.
I forgot what I was going to say. I was, I was shocked from every aspect of it, and what shocked me the most is nine-one-one, man. They ain't in there eating pizza watching Archie Bunker. It's a, it's a handful, man. It's, it is a handful, and I'm like, I wouldn't want that job. Irritating people like me calling, you know? It's just, you cat, the cat, neighbor's cat's my tree, but it's, it's actually very, it's eye-opening.
He, he is a hundred and fifty. He just voted Archie Bunker.
And I'd like, and, and by the way, the Heritage Fest, I would like to, uh, thank Livingston's and Social Tap for, uh, for taking part and being part of the family. And it was, it was just a nice time, but Social Tap come out and, and, huh?
They're all in the family.
Yeah. But Social Tap had some of their best beverages out there, and it was just a, a good time. And, uh, wear sunscreen next year, Mayor. Enjoy it.
I'm just going to say ditto to everything they all said. So, definitely sign up for Citizens Police Academy and Heritage Fest was awesome.
Nothing tonight.
Nothing Archie Bunker all day.
No.
Okay.
I don't have anything either.
All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Mr. Mayor? I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?